You're watching City Channel 4, your window to our community.
Okay, let's convene the Iowa City City Council work session for Tuesday, October the 18th, 2016. First topic on the agenda is La Sina Meadows Water Supply, and I think Ron Kentucky is going to tell us all about it. Good evening, Ron.
Good afternoon. Ron Kentucky, Public Works Director. Kind of two discussions. One is city services outside of city limits, and then along with that, it kind of rolls into a current rural subdivision that's having issues with their water supply, and that is the La Sina Meadows Public Water Supply. Currently, our policy has been if you want city services, you have to be within the city limits, so you'd have to annex to be able to get those services. But we do have some sections in our code that allow for extension by contract, so we can negotiate an extension with another entity, whether it be a public water supply or it would be another community. And so that is allowed for in our code currently. So what you see up on the screen is the blue lines are our current city limits and the yellow lines are our current growth area. Yeah, I'm sorry, lost track. So basically, as we go through our planning process, we have that area identified as area that we could currently service with sewer, mainly sewer, but with sewer and water. So that's kind of where we're at in regards to our current area to service. So in the past history, since I've been here with the city, we have had areas that have asked us to provide water to them or provide sanitary sewer service to them. Some of those areas are on the east side of town with the mobile home parks that are there along Scott Boulevard. We have also had folks along Dane Road, south of the airport, and the Lake Ridge Mobile Home Park has also asked at times for us to provide services to them. And in this case, they are within our growth area, so basically, we have asked for annexation to occur with those. With the La Sina Meadows subdivision, this is south of Iowa City. This is Naples. If you continue to go north on this road, you end up at Menards. This is 218, the fairgrounds, and then County Materials has a plant on the east side of 218. So that's kind of the area that we're talking about there.
Ron, how far south is that of the city limits?
It's right around a mile is roughly where we're at. It's like 4,500 feet, I believe, is the exact number. You know, La Sina Meadows is a 23 lot rural subdivision. Construction in this area started in 2003. The homeowners association does operate the public water supply, so they have a permit with the DNR to operate their system. The system has two wells, and what they've encountered is some radium issues and gross alpha maxima contaminant limits. So in 2008, they hired MMS to start looking at this issue and try to come up with solutions to the problem. And so we've been looking at, so this issue's been out there for eight years, so it's not something that, there's really not an easy solution to the problem. With the Flint, Michigan issues that have arisen with the lead in the corrosive water that they've had there, EPA and DNR is starting to look more seriously at these problems. And the La Sina Meadows is on the top, one of the top issues that the state of Iowa is looking at in regards to water quality. With preliminary engineering report that MMS put together, they've revised that recently, and they've basically come up with two feasible alternatives for this subdivision. Ion exchange, basically, it's water softening. They soften the water at the wells. The backwash that's there then is, in this instance, would be collected, and they would haul that to our wastewater plant for disposal. Or basically, connection to the city water system. You know, they both have their positives and their negatives. For the ion exchange, for the homeowner association, it's a cheaper upfront cost for them, but then over the years, it is a more, the annual upkeep of that is larger, and they're going to rely on somebody else to dispose the, basically, the backwash water, too. The connection to city water system, obviously, is a much higher upfront cost for them, but in this case, it would actually address the issue long-term for this subdivision. So basically, what they'd be doing is they would, our water main is on Naples currently. They would extend the water main down and tie into their subdivision and run it through. As you saw back here, that's roughly a $725,000 project for them. And they would upfront all that cost, but there'd be no city contribution as far as we look at it currently. And this is just to highlight, you know, kind of where we're at with our growth area, the current city limits, and really, the limiting factor in regards to growth area in this area is it's in the Old Man's Creek watershed, and it's not an area that we've looked at as an area that we would ever sewer with the way our current configuration is. So we would not imagine that we would bring this into city limits in the future for us. We've thought a lot about this, and you know, at this point, I think we would like to be able to update the policy to allow for the services outside of the city limits, kind of in two situations. One is, with these two caveats, one is that it is a public health issue. The radium and high alpha gross issues are both cancer-causing carcinogens, so it is a health concern. And then the development that we'd be looking to servicing would be outside of our growth area. So that's kind of what our recommendation is as we move forward in discussions with the La Sina Meadows subdivision.
Thanks. Can I add a couple of things to that? One, Ron mentioned the Flint, Michigan situation that certainly has, we have seen a lot more pressure from the state and feds on water supplies, and there's a lot of discussion across the country about some of the rural water supplies and what the best long-term solution is. Ron presented the two scenarios, really the options that the La Sina Meadows subdivision has, and it's, it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, but the state has acknowledged that both of those would probably work. But I think it's clear that, long-term, the city is much better able to keep up with the ever-tightening regulations on water quality than they would be. So while they may have a solution that works, that's cheaper for them upfront, they still have that unknown of what future regulations may be and what cost of compliance with those future regulations may be, which is why I think that they're interested in the more expensive option, which would be connecting to the city supply. So we still think it's important that if you're within the growth boundary, that you work towards annexation. But in this case, again, staff is proceeding down a path, and they're just looking for some initial feedback from you, concerns that you may have or questions. We're proceeding down the path that if it's outside of the growth area and there is a public health issue, that we would have at least the discretion to be able to step in and serve those areas. One thing Ron mentioned was the expectation that the private development would pay 100% of the cost, and we would also come back to you at some point and recommend a out-of-community rate, basically, a non-Iowa City rate, so we would expect that they would pay a higher consumption rate for that water. And right now, those discussions have been about one and a half times our water rate, and that increased rate would, you know, just basically add to our ability to maintain that, because once this is built, it will become our responsibility. And although, you know, a new water main, you don't expect a whole lot of issues from a maintenance side. Over the years, we will have water main breaks, and then there will be other issues that require our maintenance, and so we are looking at a higher rate as well.
Jeff, is there a way to structure this so that they do have some responsibility for repairs? I mean, I guess part of my concern is even at that 1.5x, you take a 20, I think it was a 23 houses in that development, is that right? I mean, their consumption, I guess just my question is, even at one and a half times, and I realize with a new water main, we shouldn't have breaks for 15 or 20 or 25 years, what are we setting the city up for in 20 or 30 or 40 years if we have the full responsibility of maintaining and/or rebuilding? I would prefer to see, I'd prefer even to see that they didn't pay as much of a premium, but that they still had the full responsibility for the maintenance and rebuilding, if that's possible.
Yeah, I don't know. If you have a reaction to that, Ron? My quick reaction is, you know, our current rate structure is set to that where we, you know, anticipate a number of main breaks per year, and that's basically enough funding to cover that. And then, you know, on occasion, we'll bond for extensions or repairs, but we're pretty comfortable with our current rate structure and the adjustments that we make. It gives us the ability to serve that. I think this is just an added cushion. Ron, if you've got anything else?
I would agree with that. The only other thing that I would add is, you know, as we negotiate the agreement to be able to service these folks, you know, when we do have a new subdivision that comes into our community, or we have a water main extension fee that we do have as a part of a per acre fee, and that currently is $435 per acre. When we've had infill development, we've basically just had, charged one acre per tap. So if we would look at structuring it in that manner, it would be kind of a $10,000 upfront cost that would go into that extension. Basically, helps us to maintain the system, per se. And I think I would rather structure it that way and really still have the city bear the maintenance of it, because the issue at hand is if you rely on folks to try, to have to maintain the system themselves, they will struggle to do that, and in the end, we will end up, you know, having to help them in that, in that manner, on those main breaks.
Yeah, I think it's just an enforcement issue. I mean, you can place that obligation on them, but then you have to get the money out of them when that maintenance is required, and it's going to be very difficult to guarantee that.
Ron, how unique is this particular location in terms of this type of problem? You'd mentioned the contaminants. Is this something that we're likely to see in a lot of different areas, or is there something geographically unique that we're not anticipating that this will set a precedent for future requests?
I think that, you know, in this, in this part of the county, I think this is not a unique situation. I think the situation at hand for this group is that they are, they have a public water supply, and they are working with the DNR as an entity similar to the way we do with our water system. And so there is the potential of the subdivision that's actually across the road from them. Let me go back. So there is a subdivision that's actually on the east side of Dane Road that may face similar situation in this same issue with their water supply permit. They're not there yet, but from what we're seeing in the reports that they've been submitting, they're going down the same road that La Sina Meadows did. So I don't think, I mean, this is not unique to this subdivision, but I think that what we, I think as we move forward with this, you know, as we do this by agreement, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to service everybody that comes to us, and we wouldn't have to service every new subdivision that pops up in this area because there is a city water supply.
Because this looks like a compelling public health issue, and I obviously support that. The only concern I have is that if this then sets a precedent for future annexation requests, we could find ourselves where people will request this solution as opposed to annexation. I don't know if that's a valid concern or where that comes in.
Anytime annexation is on the table, and so it really looks at our growth boundaries. And we do have a couple of developments within our growth boundaries that have approached us with similar issues, be it water or sewer issues. And in those cases, we've said annexation's the appropriate step to take. We wouldn't, we wouldn't look for a contract service under those circumstances. This is unique because it's outside of our growth area, really little to no ability to sewer it, and don't think annexation's going to be on the table anytime soon.
Will we run into this on the east side of town? The same type of thing with the new school going up and Taft being the end of our growth and city limits? Is that?
I think there's that potential. We had, you know, with the public water supply systems that are on that side, we haven't, we haven't experienced these types of concerns. They have not been brought up yet.
All right. Just big picture, you know, one of the things to think about, as soon as you, and as soon as you drop that water main down, what's the, what's the road there? I'm drawing a blank on.
Naples.
Naples, thank you. Naples, certainly, the properties that become more valuable, and you're going to, you're probably going to see some more speculation for more rural subdivisions out there. So there is this kind of sprawl element to it, but as Ron mentioned, you know, we have the discretion to allow people to tap into our main or to not tap into our main, so we don't have to allow those folks access to water. And in the same vein, the county has the, you know, the ability to approve those subdivisions. So it's not like there's no control and there's going to be rampant sprawl, but it is a consideration.
And one thing I do want to point out, the existing main that we have along Old Highway 218 is a dead-end main, so that basically, we've extended a main down to County Materials, and one of the possibilities that this main would allow us to actually loop that across 218, and so actually loop that area and really benefit the city and current city citizens or community members with the loop of that system in the future.
Ron, I have heard that in, sometime in the past couple of years, at least one developer has approached the city about developing, I think, this land immediately to the north of this subdivision, or across Highway 218, in any event. And so, you know, I worry about this in the sense that some future council, I don't know, 10 years from now, might get a number of requests to build on that property. And if the line's there, why not let them do it? You know, I can see a future council kind of thinking that way. So.
Well, and along with that, Jim, what concerns, yeah, what concerns me is, you know, if we sit here and are compelled to do it today, and the city is bearing, to me, the risk in the future in terms of the maintenance, et cetera, and you've got this undeveloped land, you know, as Jeff's just said, it's going to be kind of incentive to build some more out there, and while, yes, we're not required to let them tap in, but if they go ahead and have their own water supply for five years, let's say, and then all of a sudden, they've got the same health issues, how is a council going to sit here or our staff sit here and say, "We let La Sina Meadows tap in because it was a health issue, and now what are we going to do with this new one?" So I, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not totally comfortable with this.
Does anybody else have questions or?
Ron, this is just for the water service?
Correct.
Not the roads?
Correct. It's just, it would just be for the water supply.
And the sewer, did you mention the sewer? How was it?
They're on septic systems in their subdivision.
Well, I mean, Jeff anticipated my concern that, yes, there's, the upfront cost is being covered, but what about the operational and maintenance costs? And so that, that seems to be addressed. So I would be concerned as a homeowner out there about the roadway expenses down the, down the road, pardon the pun, but, you know, those are going to be significant as well to that, to those homeowners.
Well, our hope, our hope tonight wasn't to necessarily get you to commit yes or no, but to just to understand some of the concerns, and we can continue to work through those with the, with the folks in the subdivision. And I have initiated the conversation with the county as well, so that they know that this is being discussed, and I expect that we'll get some feedback from them. It's my understanding that La Sina Meadows may want to start, if we do give them a green light, as early as February or March of next year.
So that, you know, they have a number of days that they need to meet with the DNR, and so they have got an initial commitment from the DNR for some SRF funding, so for forgivable loans for them to be able to build this. Their goal was to start in February of next year, and I think the, in the conference call we had with the DNR last week, that timeline may be a little ambitious, but it is something that they would like to move on sooner than later.
And I guess just, I share Susan's concern on this, but I think if we could have very clear language to ensure that this exception doesn't then swallow the rule, I think my concerns would be addressed, for what it's worth. But I think we do have a precedent concern, is sort of what my, my concern is, so.
On that point, Jeff, could you revisit how you answered the question about the area east of Taft Boulevard? Are there similar subdivisions there now that may or may not in the future have some kind of water?
I'm not familiar with the rural developments that would be east of Taft. I don't know if, Ron, you are, Doug or John may know of some that are out there, but we haven't heard concerns on water supply out there.
Yeah, so it's basically the precedent question. Are there other subdivisions that might, in the foreseeable future?
Potentially, yes. Now, I would say without state funding, it's unlikely that La Sina Meadows would pursue this option. I think the state, in the form of the forgivable loan, the state may be paying 70, 80% of these costs. I mean, that's how much of a concern this is to the, to the state. I don't know of any other subdivisions around Iowa City that are in that situation, and if it's not on the top of the state's list, I don't think that they would be, they would be pushing for it, because this is a very, very expensive solution for a 23-lot subdivision.
It's making me wonder what questions we haven't asked or what concerns we haven't expressed that we really should. Do any of you have any further?
I just have great health concerns about the whole issue and the water and what's in the water, and have they addressed like even the soil and the condition of that? And that just really concerns me.
I mean, it's with the groundwater is where they, this, it's a natural, it's a natural occurrence, so it's not, you know, a brownfields issue, it's just, you know, a natural occurrence in the water that they're, they're actually have there. And, you know, the other options that they looked at was, you know, drilling new wells and doing some of those things, but there's no guarantee that by doing that, they will solve the issue. So those were options that they did look at, that they, they took off the table almost immediately because of the concern that you just don't get to a different water source.
We are, we are looking, Ron and his staff have checked policies in other cities. This isn't groundbreaking that a city would extend a utility service outside their borders, and there's others in Iowa and really throughout the country that do it. So we are, as we, as we think about developing a policy or any code changes to present to you, we are looking at how other cities are handling those as well.
From the point of view of Public Works, am I right in assuming that adding this line and servicing those 23 households would not pose any significant challenges in terms of the water supply system?
That's correct. Now, our current plant has a design capacity of 16.7 million gallons per day, so we have a, we have a large capacity. Our average daily is about 5.5 million gallons, so we're about a third of the capacity that our plant has, although with the way our water sources are all connected right now, between 10 and 12 million gallons per day is kind of our comfort level, where we don't have to really push things and really mess with the chemistry. La Sina Meadows is about 17,000 gallons per day would be their need, so they're .017 MGD, so it's a pretty minimal amount of capacity that would take from our system.
And there wouldn't be any, I don't know, pressure problem?
No. No. Now, according to the way it's modeled today, there isn't an issue. The, kind of the concern that the DNR has right now, just in regards to the thing, is our minimum main size is eight-inch main is what we require in subdivisions in our community. That's not typically a size of main that they, that they would build through an SRF loan, just because the capacity that that serves is quite a bit more than what the need is for this type of, so that's one of the, one of the issues right now that the DNR is trying to work through and figure out how either they, you know, pay for whatever the minimum main size that they would pay for, and then the development pays for the above, or exactly how that works. But, yeah, so as far as the capacity, there's no issue for us from a water supply issue.
And this is, Ron, just one line going down to the entry drive?
That's correct.
And that's the limit of our?
Yeah, so it would be, it would actually go down Naples and then run through the subdivision to Dane Road, so it actually hooks all the way through. So each, each house would have its own meter, same as the way a resident works in Iowa City, and so we would meter and build them individually, is the way that we would anticipate this working.
Jeff, can you say again what exactly you're wanting from council right now? I mean, you just said general concerns. We just wanted to identify any concerns out there, and, you know, we heard long-term maintenance and really precedent and, you know, what this may do with future development along Naples. We'll continue to work on those. We'll bring it back. We'll continue to, you know, tell the developer, you need, you need a good Plan B, there's, you know, there's no guarantee at this point, but we'll try to package this up and present it to you with some final recommendations and see where we go from there. But it sounds like there's still some discussions with the state and the subdivision that need to take place, and again, I started a dialogue with the county, and we need to continue that before we get too much further along.
Well, it also gives me some enjoyable homework to do. I've never been in that subdivision, ever driven along Naples, so I'll do that. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we can move along to the next topic, which was a late addition. I apologize to you about that, but things won't become very complicated, I don't think. So the next topic is to discuss future actions concerning downtown development, and there was a memo from me, I think dated October the 14th, in the late handout. So let me say a few words about it, and then just basically ask you one question. So in that memo I distributed to you a couple of months ago, I proposed several possible actions concerning downtown development, and my intent was to provide a starting point for resolving disagreements or concerns about future development of our downtown. The first major item on that list was to review the downtown portion of the downtown riverfront crossings plan, and if necessary, to consider amending it. So the memo in the late handout reports two, I think, two relevant actions that have occurred over the past two months. The first, that I've had many conversations with a wide range of key stakeholders, quite a variety of stakeholders, and I've learned a lot during these discussions. It's really been very helpful to me. One of the things I learned is that several key stakeholders had not read the downtown plan and have been surprised to discover what it calls for. The second is that the Downtown District's Board, I noticed that Bill and Nancy are in the room, has recently recommended that we review the downtown part of the plan, and if necessary, consider amending it. That's a correct statement, is it, Nancy? Yeah, thanks. So these two facts lead me now to suggest that we schedule a special two-hour work session focusing on the downtown plan. The memo I circulated to you also proposed a possible procedure that we could follow when conducting that special work session. I'd rather we not get hung up on it right now, on that proposal. It was really me just kind of getting something out there as a possibility. There are many possibilities. What I really ask you to consider tonight is whether, whether you support the idea of scheduling a special two-hour work session. If you do, we can set aside time in our next work session to discuss how it should be designed. That's my thinking. So your feedback? I look forward to hearing it.
Well, I guess I'll just start, I mean, I think, to me, one of the big reasons that we're at this point, quite frankly, was the voting down of Kevin Munson's project by this council. I mean, to me, that sent, and I've heard this from many, many people across the community. I mean, to me, that sent, and I've heard this from many, many people across the community in a lot of different positions, from bankers to attorneys to developers, that that set, that was the first big vote by this new council in terms of downtown development. And with a project like that, which met the zoning, it was not a zoning issue, that was CB-10, that was not a parking issue, because that was going before the Board of Adjustment, that was not before the council that night, that required an absolute minimum amount of money by the city, seventy-two thousand dollars to leverage maybe a million dollars or so in workforce housing tax credits, really sent a message to the development community. They reinforced some of their concerns before the election about the attitude of the new majority towards development in the community, and particularly development downtown. And I think really that's why we're here now, is because, I mean, I've sat in the focus group for the Economic Development Committee with developers who either have used TIF or have applied for and been awarded, maybe they haven't used it. And there was a one-hundred percent clear message from that group that they see development in downtown, and particularly anything large, anything that is high, because they feel like this council doesn't want anything high downtown, won't come before this council, because they're not going to put two to three hundred thousand dollars on the table with the odds being that it won't be approved, particularly after seeing Kevin Munson's voted down, which met the zoning requirements and wasn't even asking for TIF. So, you know, I guess there are certainly some concerns, and I know the Downtown District has expressed some concerns of either contradiction or different interpretation between that downtown plan and the zoning. But I'm just very concerned and very cautious. That plan was developed over many, many months, if not over a year, with dozens, if not hundreds, of people involved. We talk about public input and how important that is. This council certainly has stressed that significantly during the campaigns last fall and since the new members have been on. And so, I'm really concerned that we not take a plan that was developed with that kind of significant public input and start looking at changing it based on the views of a much, much smaller number of people. I'm not saying I'm against this, but I'm just very, very concerned if we do move forward that we've got some pretty strict parameters on how we do it and what's open for discussion.
The rest of you?
Yeah, so as far as kind of how you frame the question, I'm supportive. We talked about having a more clear conversation and getting, you know, interested parties in the room, and having kind of this special work session, how you kind of, I mean, I know you're not talking about the actual process of this moment, but it seems like a great facilitation process. And so, I'd be supportive of just, you know, of having that conversation.
I'm supportive as well, because I think one of the key things we need to do, as Susan mentions, is signal our clear intent as to the direction of the downtown. And I think we do that by what the comp plan states. So, I am welcoming, and in fact, this is what I called for a month and a half ago, that I felt to the extent that there were concerns about that, we do need to look at modifying that. Because if you look at that direction, that does not call for the types of vertical developments that are being proposed. Now, that said, if we get and go through this process, and we have that community input, and there's overwhelming support for some of these sorts of developments, and it's in the comp plan, my view on that well could change. But for us, we do disagree on that. And I think that's why we need to have this comp plan discussion. And as I understand what you're saying, Jim, we may, after the work session, say we don't want to change it.
Could be.
And so, I support that.
Well, my point, when we had a discussion about the downtown plan, was that, and this may be just a wording issue, but that, as Susan said, and I would agree, there was an enormous amount of work that went into the comprehensive plan. I mean, years of work. I spent more time than I would like to admit, looking at not only the comprehensive plan, but the twenty years of planning in the downtown that culminated in the downtown riverfront plan. There was a really great consistency, I found, in those twenty years of discussion, the near-south downtown plan, a whole series of documents that were quite consistent in their formulation about the downtown and how it should expand and so forth, that were consistent with the downtown riverfront crossings plan. There's very explicit language in that plan with respect to development. So, Susan, when you say that you support that plan, you know, this language was quite clear, and, you know, with respect to the proposal on Lynn Street, you know, would say that it's not consistent with the design guidelines of the comprehensive plan.
I would disagree.
You're free to disagree, but there was pretty clear language in there about where taller buildings should be placed.
And I think "should" is a key word. And I think aspirational versus codified is significant between a comp plan and zoning.
Well, typically, comprehensive plans are couched in those language, you know, the language of "should" and "encourage." And, you know, I took the words on their face value in terms of the direction that council would consider. And I would further say that there's, I think everyone should understand that that plan was based on market analysis of development potential, not only in the downtown, but in the riverfront crossing area. So, it's not some sort of aesthetic concept at work there. It was a concept that was based on that development potential, and how through a form-based code to distribute it over a very large area. So, you know, I support having the conversation. I am concerned, you know, as Jim noted in his October fourteenth memo, that there are some people who are deeply concerned about the downtown that hadn't read the downtown plan. There's a lot of documentation there that people need to be familiar with. You know, if we're going to have a two-hour discussion with what a brief presentation by staff, how do we encapsulate that history that goes into the downtown discussion is challenging, I would say. And again, there are hundreds of people, thousands of hours of everyone's participation that went into developing the downtown riverfront crossings plan. So, I'm willing to do it. I just am concerned that, you know, there is a lot of weight that that plan has, and I appreciate the idea that, you know, there is a certain open-endedness that's inevitable with a comprehensive plan. And how we can translate that spirit into a codification is the challenge. How do we take that plan and articulate it in a way which has application to the zoning code?
So, if I could say just a couple words here, I'm really happy to have an opportunity to disagree with both Susan and John. Because the two of you agree about all the work that went into the downtown and riverfront crossings plan, all the citizen participation time that was committed, all the staff time. We were on the council at the same time, so we went through that whole process and have a pretty clear idea of how much commitment of time and energy went into it. But I've heard from several people that, in their view, all that attention was focused on the area south of Burlington Street, not on the downtown. So, I've heard that people really didn't pay any attention, really, to the downtown part of the plan. So, maybe that would explain why I've heard that other people agree, we need to revisit the downtown part of the plan. That said, you know, I have no idea how that process, what the outcome of that process would be. I just think we owe it to the people of this city to construct a process that enables us to make sure that plan is consistent with our understanding of the public's views, and which also gives a pretty clear signal to the development community about what our vision is for the downtown, so that we can then set other things in motion, if appropriate. So, you know, so that's part of my reasoning anyhow. I don't know, Terry, I don't know if you and Pauline have things you want to say?
Well, I agree that I think we could use a work session to talk about it, because I'm very much concerned about comments that are being made about council members, that it's implying that we're anti-development, and that couldn't be further from the truth if people had paid attention. We're very much for continuing to have vibrant community, which includes development, but sensible development. I don't believe the Munson project we were approving or disapproving, there were many aspects about that building that were very favorable, I thought. But I believe we were voting on approving some funds, so they could apply for some state assistance for the workforce housing. But, so that just really concerns me. And I think that we do need to get stakeholders together and get back on the same boat and the same track, so that we can move in a positive direction as far as development of downtown.
I guess I, I'm right in the middle here. I do think that, you know, our comprehensive plan was including the downtown, maybe not to your satisfaction, but I think that it was encompassing of all that. And with the number of people that were involved, the fact that you're hearing from a couple people that they didn't think the downtown was in there, well, that's more of opinion. I think we really have to, I'm fine with doing a couple hours. I don't think that's enough. I think if you're going to start talking about redoing the whole downtown, it's not going to be two-hour meeting here. I think it's going to be a year or two process. I don't think you can narrow it down that much when we're talking about, we've got a lot of property owners, a lot of them don't live in Iowa City. So, you're going to make decisions for them, they're going to have to work at trying to get back here, or send a representative to look at their interests. So, I don't have a problem with doing a meeting, but I would be very careful in how it was set up, and I don't think that you could make a decision after a two-hour meeting.
One quick kind of comment in somewhat relation to that is, again, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have the conversation, but one of the things that I did want to put, I had in my notes, is, you know, and you've already talked about, we're not going to focus on the process, and I don't think we should, I'm not going to get too much into that piece. But I'm actually thinking that there may be a need for a couple of meetings before we even get to this particular meeting. And the reason why I say that is because I'm very interested in the stakeholder piece, because I think the community is going to be very interested in the stakeholder piece. And so, who gets the invite to have a conversation about this downtown plan, I think is going to be very, very interesting. And kind of to Susan's first point, you know, how we construct it would be something that people may feel is, I'm trying to look at the word, is, I wouldn't say problematic, but conducive to how we want it to be viewed. I mean, I'm just thinking of some of the problematic things that I would, as I think about some of the community stakeholder things that I put together, of ensuring that we have multiple interests. And so, to do that, I don't think we necessarily can do that through the process of by which, I think about the Charter Review Committee, and how we, you know, did it in a similar process that we did the, we do the committees for all the other different things that we do. And so, there's a stakeholder piece I have questions about, but like I said, we won't have the conversation. But I think, again, everybody's going to be watching who is a stakeholder and paying attention to that piece. And so, there's a couple of things that I think we need to flesh out from that perspective.
I, go ahead.
I would say, as you head into your work session to discuss this at your next meeting, you really need to be thinking about what your end game is here for council in terms of what you're hoping to accomplish. Two hours isn't going to solve all the land use questions and issues that you have out there. Some of you have noted, that's a much longer process. And we've got a pretty good history of, you know, going through comp plans and doing that, and that can be done. But I think you really have, as I see it, four options. And ultimately, I think what you need to get out of the work session is, which of these four options are you going to pursue? And there may be others that you think of. But one is to follow the recommendation of the existing comp plan, which calls for a form-based code of downtown, and you can initiate that process. And that's a very intensive public process as well. And we're, you know, gearing up to do that in the north side marketplace area, the near-north neighborhoods and southeast sides of Iowa City. So, you could go that route and look for the form-based code solution to, I won't say resolve, but facilitate the discussions you're hoping to have on land use, and ultimately make some decisions on that. You can go back and, if you know specifically what you'd like to change about the current CB-10 zoning, you can amend our code in a way that you feel is consistent with the comprehensive plan. If you want to completely redo the comprehensive plan, there is a process in place, and council can initiate comp plan changes. There is a code provision to allow you to do that. But there's also an expectation as community on what a comp plan planning process looks like. And it's very intensive, and many of you have participated in those, be it neighborhoods or downtown or riverfront crossings. But I think that we need to probably look to how we've done those in the past and commit ourselves to a multi-year process to really do a downtown comprehensive plan. And of course, the fourth option then would be to do nothing and kind of recognize that the comp plan is a general guide, and that the council does have some discretion within that comp plan when it comes to individual projects that may be before them. So, form-based code, CB-10 changes, comp plan, status quo, I think are your options. And I think that's what you need to be thinking, that whatever this work session becomes, you're going to want to get out of that, the information that you need to pursue one of those options.
Jeff, what about the, just the modification and clarification piece? You know, because I guess is what I understand you're calling for, Jim, is that you're not necessarily calling for totally reimagining every aspect of the downtown comp plan. It would seem to me that if we were to have a meeting now, there'd probably be eighty to eighty-five percent of those parts where there'd be a lot of agreement on. At least what I'm hoping we accomplish is, is figure out whether we want to engage on that fifteen to twenty percent, and whether that modification process would be as time-intensive as starting from scratch.
Doesn't have to be.
Because that's sort of what I'm thinking. I don't want to start from scratch. I think there's a lot of consensus already on probably eighty to eighty-five percent of it, is my sense. It's just those.
In my view, that's a political consideration. If you can initiate a comp plan change, you just, I think you just have to be cognizant of the multitude of people, particularly with a downtown plan, that would want to weigh in. And it's going to extend well beyond any groups that you would invite as stakeholders. The stakeholders are just much broader than you would say if we were tweaking a neighborhood comp plan. You know, those are very focused efforts. This is a tricky one. It's going to be hard to get your arms around, I think, very narrow tweaks to a comp plan.
Jeff, would you please craft a memo kind of summarizing what you just said about the four choices you think we have before us?
I just want to say something here, because, I mean, I have legal concerns that echo Jeff's more political-practical concerns. I mean, if you look at the process under the state code and the city code for comp plan amendments, while the council can initiate that, basically, what then happens is the whole public process. And that, of course, is, we have public hearings that we have to go through, and in our town, we have done that public planning process. And so, I have concern when you're talking about identifying stakeholders, certain stakeholders that are going to have a seat at the table in talking to council about what comp plan changes we're going to make. Because that's not the process that's envisioned. It's a public process, like the ones that we've gone through before. And if indeed, as you say, Jim, there wasn't focus on the downtown part of the plan, then the remedy to that is to focus, to do that planning process for the downtown, not to identify specific stakeholders, if what you're talking about is a comp plan amendment. Now, if you want to do a form-based code process, like Jeff has talked about, then, you know, you could go through that process. But the whole stakeholder thing with the comp plan amendment- with the comp plan amendment is just not, it's not consistent to me with the code.
I'm a little puzzled about part of what you say, Eleanor, though it's clear that that, that process you described is what usually is done. But with regard, we often are presented with proposed changes in the comprehensive plan. And those proposed changes do go through planning and zoning, and so there are public hearings at that level.
They do.
But beyond that, it's not an incredibly long, complicated process, not a one or two-year process. So, so I don't understand...
But you're talking, but you're talking about the downtown. You're talking about initiating a discussion about the downtown.
Yeah.
A big area with no, you know, you're, you're not, you're not suggesting that there be an amendment to the comprehensive plan in a certain respect. You're, you're talking about a whole area of town.
Yeah, typically when we do comp plan amendments and they accompany a rezoning, it's focused on one specific development or parcel that, that, you know, there's a different concept for. And staff is recommending that we tweak the comp plan to reflect this, this new idea that comes up. If you can narrowly tailor what you want to do, then, then maybe you can, you know, do that comp plan amendment. I think just knowing the, the community interest in the downtown, I'm a little skeptical to think that, you know, a, a short-term, couple-month amendment will work. But perhaps it could...
Let me, let me say a word about what my underlying thinking was. And then I suppose we could, since we've agreed to hold a two-hour work session, we could do that. And, and, but there are other things to consider as Eleanor and Jeff have brought up. But the, the things that were on my mind as I crafted this proposal are, first, right now we have people talking past one another. Here somebody make a statement that does not take into account what other people have already said in other parts of the community. They're talking past one another. That's not good for us as a community or as a council. So three principles guided my own thinking when I was crafting this proposal. First, that we enable a diverse mix of stakeholders, people who have clear, strong stakes in the downtown, to engage in face-to-face discussions with one another about how to resolve our shared problem. We have a shared problem. And it's one that involves this talking past one another. The second principle that was on my mind is that we identify a good neutral person to facilitate that discussion. So that they're actually engaging one another in conversation and hearing one another. And third, that we council members simply listen and take notes so that we can hear fruitful inter, hopefully fruitful interaction among these diverse people. It doesn't mean that's the end of the process, but it does mean it, it would provide us with basic information that would help us potentially propose some changes to the comp plan and then get it in the process. That's what I was thinking. And, you know, if that is, you know, is deficient legally, I need to hear that. Or if it's deficient some other way, I need to hear that. But that's what I was thinking.
I think, I mean, I think it comes back really critically to how, you know, and I hadn't thought of it from exactly the same perspective as, as Eleanor just put it. But, and Kingsley kind of mentioned before, you know, how do you select the people for this meeting?
It's a bigger, that's a big...
I think that's, I mean, I think that's really huge in terms of, you know, what, what council gets out of that meeting is going to be entirely dependent upon who is asked to participate in that meeting. And I think that's, I think that can be very, very problematic in terms of trying to make those selections. And, you know, you talk about people, and I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to, but you, you talk about people talking past each other. I wasn't going to say anything more, but I am going to go back just real quickly to, to Pauline's comments about the vote on the Munson Project because I would agree that yes, technically what this council was voting on, what was technically before us was money. But there was, I don't re, I'd have to go back and listen to the tape of the meeting. But my recollection is there was virtually no discussion of the money. It was not an issue of the money that night. It was an issue of the height of the building. It was an issue of who might live in the building. And it was an issue of the parking. None of which probably legally or technically should have been taken into account by this council on that vote. We were voting on the money. I don't recall a single council member saying, oh, this is not a good investment of $72,000 to get a million-dollar return in workforce housing tax credits. It was about the size, the height of it, even though it was a CB-10 zone. It was a little bit about the location next to the yacht club. It was about students might live in the building. And it was about parking, which was supposed to go before board of adjustment. So you can talk about people talking past each other and people on this council saying, oh, we're pro-development. We're never, no, never been anti-development. That's not what was said, you know, regarding TIF and other things during the campaign. And this is the first big economic development project for this council to vote on. And it got voted down. And whether you agree with it or not, that is a significant message that has been sent to the development banking community in this town.
So, I mean, Jim, your proposal is to change your process. I mean, the way I see it, from kind of a collaborative, issue-based kind of discussion standpoint is, you know, you get interested stakeholders in a group, you have some type of small group discussion. Again, you're not even asking about what the pro, you're not even talking about what the process would be. But, you know, again, I think, I think we, I think we can move forward and do some type of work session, kind of shore up some of the elements as far as what exactly that process would be. But I, I think that everybody here would want, wants a conversation. I, I agree with some of the concerns that are mentioned here as far as exactly what that conversation will ultimately lead to. And I think in the interim, as we're scheduling that special work session, we're going to need to think about that and have that conversation. But, but yeah, I mean, I think that we, we need to talk in some way, shape, or form from a variety of different elements. But I think we should just move forward.
Okay. I think we're agreed that we want to schedule a special two-hour work session. And we don't know what will happen after that, but we want that Jeff memo, please. Eleanor, if you think that it would be fruitful, helpful for us to get some legal insight, please do write something on that. And then we'll have to find, we'll have to schedule a date. We don't need to do it right now, I don't think.
Why don't I send an email to all of you with, and see what, we've got some...
Well, well, wait a minute. Let's take into account the holiday season.
Well, wait a minute. I mean, the first thing we've got to do, are we going to try and put it on next session's work agenda to just even talk? I mean, I don't see how we can even schedule the special work session until we've talked about how we're going to even figure out who we're inviting to the meeting. So...
Yeah. Susan's right about that. So it just needs, that part of it needs to be on our next work session agenda. Okay. Thank you. Which leads us to a new item on our work session agenda. Because for those of you who don't know, we have restructured our work sessions. So the new item is titled clarification of agenda items, which I think means not going into great detail, asking all sorts of questions that could have been asked of the staff ahead of time, but instead just asking any questions to clarify some aspect of any particular agenda item. Marion, is that the way you understood it?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. So any items anybody wants to bring up?
I'd just like to note the revision you have this evening for you for 4D1, the revised resolution showing a revised project annual cost on the asphalt resurfacing project. Again, it remains in the consent calendar, just a revised actual cost. And then also you have, just noting a revision to, a motion you're setting a public hearing on for the assigned ordinance. Again, you're just setting the public hearing, but the notice will show a revised item in comment.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So does anyone want to seek some clarification on any agenda item? How about item 4F7, the Mobile Vending Association's request for a temporary pilot program for licensed food trucks? Jeff, have you had conversations with Kyle Seek or Anthony Brown or any of the other folks who made that submission or proposed that possibility?
Yeah. Kyle approached me about a week and a half ago or so, and I met with him. He gave me a preliminary copy of this, of the memo that's in your, in your packet. And I, I haven't obviously forwarded anything on to you. I knew, I know Kyle, I think, will be here during public comment to address you verbally. They are seeking a pilot project in downtown to serve the late-night bar crowd. And a current code prohibits service downtown. So in order to do, allow any service downtown, you'd have to direct staff to do a code amendment.
Yeah. I was wondering about that, Eleanor. So from a legal point of view, it would take us, I don't know, at least six weeks or something like that to move our way through a code amendment, would it not?
Well, I mean, it takes two readings essentially. I mean...
But we'd have to schedule a public hearing?
Oh, there wouldn't be a public hearing required.
No, no public hearing. Okay.
So you could, you could do it in two meetings. You could do it.
Okay. So four weeks anyhow, I guess, unless we have a special meeting.
I think, I think we, you know, if, if it's a simple code amendment, we could bring it to November 1st and you could collapse readings on November 15th. I think that'd be about the soonest we could, we could present something.
That would be for the pilot project or for the whole amendment of allowing?
Either one. I mean, we could amend the code to allow for a pilot project is probably what we would do, whether that's giving me discretion to allow a pilot project or specifically contemplating this pilot project that's being proposed.
I guess I would like to put that then on our agenda for November 1st. I, I, Jim, was going to bring that up during council time and was going to actually propose a work session so we could get some memos from staff and downtown and the pilot, and the food truck folks as well. I'm still willing to do that if people still have concerns about that. But my preference is the November 1st. But if people don't want to do that, at least if we could do a short work session to give sort of our, our point of view, I'd, I'd also prefer that too. So, but I was going to bring that up during council time.
I would like the November 1st, November 15th timeline also, because as was mentioned in the letter, as far as we're getting into the, you know, colder winter season and it would, might affect their, their sales, selling of food downtown. So I think the sooner the better.
One thing, well, one thing, I will say that I was in agreement with Rockne's kind of proposal around the work session because there are considerable concerns. And from, you know, and not necessarily how Kyle's gone about it. I think he's done a wonderful job as far as reaching out to folks and trying to get some information and putting it out there. But, you know, my thought was at least initial meeting with, a sit-down with, I know Nancy's in the audience, downtown district folk, interested restaurants, because I've, I've known about this for a little bit of time just because I'm self-proclaimed food truck king. And I worry about, I worry about the interest, the problematic interest with the brick-and-mortar restaurants and the food truck business. And I don't want us to rush to something that would cause either, and I'm actually more worried about Kyle, to have some problem, some problem situations with this. And so I was going to say schedule for the work session. I'm not saying that we don't move on it quickly, but I, I do want to hear some considerable feedback from both in regards to this. And again, I've, I just, I talked to Kyle today and talked to him about, you know, this is what I was going to mention as well. Just, again, at least having some type of meeting interim where, again, interested stakeholders, because again, we know, as a council, things don't hit until, you know, it's on the particular agenda for us to make a vote. And then people are going to come out from all sides. And I don't want it to get to that point just yet. I'd rather them have some meeting set up first, talk about it amongst themselves, hopefully maybe some facilitation from the downtown district. And then presumably from that have a proposal that would, you know, talk about some of the, the pieces that I think Kyle, Kyle's memo mentions. But even him and I talked about, you know, considerations as far as location is concerned, some additional considerations that I think can clearly be vet, vetted through that meeting.
Yeah. I think it needs to, I'm not, I certainly would not support it, be supportive if it like came to us for a vote on November 1st. I think, I think staff in the downtown district spent a lot of time in developing the first ordinance in terms of the vending. And simply because we get a request where maybe, maybe it's a very reasonable request, I don't know. But I'm not willing to just vote on it because we've got a proposal for a pilot. And as you said, Kingsley, there's been lots of concerns before. And I think we have to take that time to have that discussion to really vet what those various concerns are from both sides before we would entertain voting on any kind of ordinance.
Do we have support for a work session on November 1st?
For sure. I don't know what's on November 1st work session. I guess I should know, but it's piling up pretty quick.
Well, we just put one on.
But I'm not thinking it's going to be that, I mean, it's going to be famous last words, but 10 or 15 minutes. You'd make a proposal.
I wouldn't underestimate...
We would solicit public comment.
Yeah. I wouldn't underestimate the interest in this item. There's significant interest from some of the restaurants. There's significant interest from the food truck vendors. You know, the city licenses mobile vending food carts on the Ped Mall. That group is very interested in this item. I think what might be helpful is for, for staff to present to you an overview of kind of how we got to where we are today. Because we went through a good year and a half process of pilot projects and research on other communities to develop the current ordinance that we have. This is the, really the second food vending, mobile, I'm sorry, food truck vending year, permit year we've had. And I think it'd be good for everybody to catch up to speed on that.
Couldn't we get that at the work session, though? I mean...
Yeah, we could present that at the work session. I'm just, I'm just cautioning before decisions are made, there's a lot of people that would like to talk to you, I, I would imagine about this.
And can we get from the downtown district, how many restaurants are open after 10 o'clock?
We can try.
I mean, if we can get that kind of information. Because I think, talking to Kyle, that it was mainly coming in after a lot of the restaurants have closed their kitchens. I know there's some that stay open late. But that's, that's the dialogue I had with Kyle was mainly coming in when there is fewer places open after, after 10 o'clock.
We can try to.
Eleanor, I'm wondering if we're now being too substantive about this and maybe it would be better to pull this item from the consent calendar and discuss it during the formal meeting? Or...
Why?
I think you're okay.
I think we're okay?
Because it's on the consent calendar. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I don't mind discussing it in, in a work session, but I'd like to have that kind of background information that Jeff was referring to.
I think this was a work session. And this was signaled to, you know, the downtown district that, you know, this is a, this is going to be a hot-button item. Hopefully we can have facilitation of that meeting relatively quickly.
While we're talking about this, just real quickly, it brings up something I was going to say last time, just on council procedure that I think we always used to do, and I think we've gotten away from a little bit. And I think it's important in terms of staff time that I think if we're going to ask staff to do something for us or get information from us, that we really ought to have a majority of council to direct staff. And...
Have you not done that recently?
No, we have, no, we have not done that.
Can you tell me an instance or two?
I would say in our very last meeting when, and I don't mean to pick on you, Rockne, but it was asking for the municipal rates for utilities. I didn't hear anybody else asking for that. And I think there's been a couple other times, too.
You used to have, yeah, to have at least three.
At least three, I think. And I just, I mean, I just, and, and again, I just think we have to be cognizant of what we're asking staff to do so that no one council member, any one of us, me or anybody else included, is putting, is overly burdening staff by asking for things. And so I think I would like to see us from a procedural standpoint, make sure that we are getting at least three council members if we're asking them to do stuff. And it's going to be up to Jeff, assuming that we all agree on that, it's up to Jeff to kind of, if you get something from one council member, if it's pretty minor, to say, fine. And if not, then say, well, we really need to have support of council.
I, I typically screen that. I mean, a lot of requests would come in outside of meetings and, and I have to use judgment to, to screen those and say, sure, we can get that to you. Or why don't we talk about it at a work session?
And you let us know if that's a problem.
All right. Are any other clarification items on, with regard to the agenda?
So we will have that November 1st then, on the work session?
Yeah. That's what I understand.
November 1st work session.
It'd be a six-hour one.
I doubt it. So any other items, though, for clarification? I'm not hearing any. Let's go to the info packet discussion, October 6 packet. Let's go to the info packet discussion, October 6th packet. I'm not hearing any. Let's go to the October 13th packet.
IP4.
KXIC show.
Oh, yeah.
You can do.
November 2nd.
November 2nd is Terry.
I'm shaking my notes out.
I'll take the 9th.
9th is Susan.
The only other dates I could do are November 30th and December the 7th.
Back, back.
No, just one of them. I don't care which one. So let's say November 30th.
Okay.
4th and 18th.
I'm sorry?
4th and 18th, November.
4th and 19th.
18th.
Back, okay. 4th and 18th, 12th.
Is the 16th open?
16th is still open.
I'll do 16th.
16th. Pauline? 23rd, 7th, 2nd, and 16th, and 26th.
23rd. I'll take the 23rd, I guess.
23rd is Thomas.
What's the next one?
I have October 6th, December 7th.
October 26th. I'll take the 26th.
26th is Mims.
Ready to put your?
What's the next one?
I'm sorry, Rockney.
What's the next one?
December 7th, December 2nd, December 16th.
I'll do December 2nd.
December 2nd?
I can do December 16th, because that's my birthday, and.
Happy birthday.
Tell everybody. I'd have somebody else do it for me.
December 7th, then, is the only one I think I have left.
Well, I chose the 30th.
I can do December.
Because it's two days after my birthday, you know.
Pauline, do you want to do it?
Did you want another one?
December 7th. We have Frogmoreton, the 30th.
I can, I can do the 7th, unless anybody else wants it.
Well, I can take it, too. I don't care.
You go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. Kingsley?
I'll do it.
Okay, I'll revise it and get it out in the packet.
Hey, oh, real quick, John, and I think, because that's around Thanksgiving, they still do the, because this is our first time coming around a major holiday, right? They do the tape, we can.
I have asked, I have asked that, and I will double-check that before.
So it doesn't have to be on the 23rd, you can do a session?
Yeah.
These days.
So did you get all of them, then, Marion?
I believe so.
Good deal. Okay, any other items from the October 13th information packet?
I had a question, I guess, and I should have asked this ahead of time. I just see in my notes here, why not the rest of the officers in the training? I mean, sure, this is a scheduling issue. I'm looking at, sorry, IP, IP5. And it focuses on the memo from Bill, or Officer, excuse me, Chief, Interim Police Chief Campbell.
The cultural competency training?
Yeah. And it's just a scheduling?
Yeah, you know, to do an all-staff training is, is pretty tough, but would you track those throughout the year, and the next time it's offered, you know, we'd send new people through that?
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
We did do an all-city employee, including all police department, training last fall with Dr. Eddie Moore and Diane Finerty.
Right.
That's, that's quite an undertaking, so in, you know, in between those instances where we do all-staff trainings, it's, you know, small groups.
Okay, anything else on that info packet? I don't hear anything. So according to our work session agenda, we're now done with it, and all the council time kind of stuff we used to do during work session will happen at the end of our regular formal meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good deal. We're done for now. Thank you.